Call the work session for the board, select board, Wednesday, January 25th, 2025 at 6:30. Jim, do we have any other business other than what we're going to deal with on the docks?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you said you had a PowerPoint you wanted to deal with?
Yeah, so I'm going to go through some items here. I believe the board had received the updated draft. I took the motions that have been made to this point from the board, and I've gone through the ordinance. And I've tried to reorganize it and add some definitions into the ordinance to try and help clarify. So I'll kind of go through them quickly. Under 36-1 authority, I just added 31-39, Roman numeral one, lowercase a, because that is the actual statute that gives you as the Board of Selectmen to the ability to do ordinances and bylaws for the town. So that is the only change to that, just to clarify where it came from.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, a question for Town Manager. So do you, or maybe for the rest of us, do we want to, as he goes through these, say, "We're good," so we don't have to come back and look at them again? So are we good on 36-1 authority? Do you want us to do that, say, "Jim, we're good," and then we can check that off?
So Chairman, that was my question too. My question is, do we, are we going to say, okay, you're going to read, let's say, 36-4 definitions. When it's done, we discuss that section?
Yeah.
Or do we just make notations and discuss it at the end?
So this is a work session. We can't really make decisions at work sessions.
Right.
So I think the takeaway here is to go through this. You make your notes, and then we go through and we make those motions at an
Okay.
upcoming meeting relative to
Thanks.
the changes that you want to see made.
Yeah, we can't, we can go through and change or put anything in or out, and then we send it to a public hearing at the end.
So there'll be no discussion tonight?
There'll be discussion, but you can't motion then vote.
Okay.
But we can all say, we can say, under 36-1, does anybody have any issues?
Yeah.
Right.
And then go on. If anybody does, and they tell you what it is, then you go to the next one.
That's kind of where I was, so that we don't come back and, you know, re-cook the coffee here. I'm good with 36-1.
Okay, do you want to do them individually, or do you want to do them all at the end? As we go through? Okay, sounds reasonable.
Okay. The next section is title. There's no change to the title. Purpose, 36-3, there is no change to the purpose. 36-4, here's where we have some changes and some additions. Most of these changes are clarifying existing language and adopting RSAs from the state. So town docks, that is pulled across from the previous ordinance, no change. Commercial docks, the docks owned and maintained by the town of Wolfborough located at dockside to be used by commercial passenger vessel businesses that exclusively provide passenger transportation via a body of water. See Appendix A, commercial docks are identified as follows, and I have broken those out. So commercial dock, number one, for the purpose of pickup and drop-off of passengers for up to, and I believe this is supposed to be four, not five, based on the motion you guys made, commercial vessel businesses with a pickup and drop-off time not to exceed 20 minutes per vessel per landing. I think that's kind of in line with where I was hearing you guys go.
When did we talk about 20 minutes? Anybody made 20 minutes? I thought that's too long. I didn't, I didn't recall. I can remember 10, and I know we have a sign for 15 down at the dock.
Okay.
I just don't know where 20 came from. And if I could go back to the commercial docks, and this is a possibility, when I read that, it says, "The town of Wolfborough located at dockside," and then I would say, "In Wolfborough Bay," because as you go down, all the other ones, you tell what water body. Oh, no, it's on town docks. All of them have their, where it is. So town docks, Wolfborough, located at dockside, and then I just put, "In Wolfborough Bay," and you had the limmie in Winter Harbor. It would seem like you are being consistent. That's all I'm looking for there.
I've got a, I've got a problem with commercial dock, number one. I'm going to stand by what one of my colleagues will, will think of, of the same purpose, was just for drop-off and pickup of passengers. That's, that's how I would like that dock to be named. If somebody wants to pick up commercial stuff at another location, that was for, that was for pickup and drop-off of vessels when people come in from the islands, it's not, and never was. It's, it's a, that docking area in, in the, in the ad hoc dock committee was called the commercial dock because it was, because it was where the Mount Washington landed. That was especially made, that ramp that was, and the drop-down was made there specifically for short-term drop-off passenger boats. That's how I recall it.
Jim, commercial dock one, can you clarify for us where it is and that it's only used for pickup and drop-off of passengers, please?
First of all, if you look at, oh, it's not on the screen. Okay, I can't, hold on, I can.
I know there was work done on that dock that was specifically done so that it would have railing, and it was, so people could get down to that level.
So for clarity's standpoint, this is commercial dock one, the way it's listed now. This is commercial dock two, and this is commercial dock three.
Jim?
Yeah.
My understanding, and this is where John and I disagree, that it is this section that was for pickup and drop-off by residents, and this was a commercial dock. And that's where I got it from. That's how the wording in the ordinance ran. So that's why I believe that, and this, to me, and this was part of what we had as a slide when we went to the voters, and that is the difference. And that's how it's defined. So I think
Linda, could you show us what you kind of
The yellow is where the drop-off and pickup were. You're just dropping off. You just come in here and drop off.
So Jim, this is where the, the pickup and drop-off
It's this stuff that's
Supposed to be, it was, it was specially fitted with, with work at the end of the season that year, specifically for pickup and drop-off, so that boats could go in there and pull up to the side and then back out.
I honestly do not remember what transpired with that. I remember the conversations that were held at the ad hoc committee. I guess I'm going to have to do some research to clearly define that based on the information that I'm hearing tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
But it seems like we have a, a ordinance that we did in May 2022 that defined it that way.
Mr. Chairman? So to add a little more texture to this conversation, a motion was made by the Select Board and approved on a four-to-one vote, four-to-one vote, that docks A through G, A through G inclusive, effective 1/126, will be used for non-commercial purposes as well as state and municipal boat parking. One dock space, preferably on G, will be reserved for passenger pickup and drop-off and handicap ADA access. So John, I think, I think we fixed the concern that you may be raising about that little corner. We basically have said, we now have a, a slot on Dock G for passenger pickup and drop-off. That was approved by this board, four-to-one.
I thought we were going to put the handicap spot there.
What I said in the motion, "One dock space, preferably on G, shall be reserved for passenger pickup, drop-off, drop-off, pickup, and handicapped ADA access." It didn't say "or," it didn't say, it said "and." Okay? So you could do both.
Okay.
All right? Now, what, and we're not going to, we're not going to vote on this. I know we're going to want to get into a, a conversation of, well, where, where is that pickup and drop-off? And my colleague, Student Body, right over here, has some thoughts, but, you know, when it comes to that conversation, I'm going to quickly move that we let town staff figure that out and recommend it to us. So I think we fixed your concern about that little squiggle.
No, he's after the dock.
You can't get a boat in there, in that little squiggle that you have shown. I just can't.
This is how
No, I understand. This is how we, we sold it to the voters, but the practical reality is it doesn't work.
My understanding is that you're talking, you're disagreeing about what this big, long dock is. You're talking about this dock here. Am I correct? When you say it should be for public drop-off and pickup?
That was, that was the understanding when we, when we were on the committee, that that was, that was why we had developed that area, and that would be pre-your motion, because we actually identified an area that was actually a pickup and drop-off location.
So if I, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I will agree with you that that's what we did, whether we, you know, more delineated it closely than, than what Linda is pointing out. I will tell you firsthand experience, I went over to that, I was of the impression that I could pull in there myself with Bubby's Tubby, park it in there for a few minutes, wait for the kids to get on the boat, and was, as I mentioned to this, this group, was met with a sign that said, "Private dock, go away." And so, somebody decided that they, it was their private commercial dock. I looked at that, and I said, "This doesn't make a whole bunch of sense." So I think, rather than get back into the history lesson, I think what I, what I, what we did with this motion that is now accepted is we said, "A through G for island visit, island guests, residents, people with credit cards who want to spend money, state and municipal boats. Everything else moves over to the commercial docks." And we reserve one spot, one slot for, for pickup and drop-off, including, what do you, special, special needs.
Handicap ADA
Yeah, special needs. And I think we all, we agreed to that four-to-one. So I think that now is baked into the cake.
For next year.
1/126.
That's what we're doing.
Right.
That's right. So what's going to happen this year?
It, it, it is what it is.
Free-for-all.
We can't change this year.
It, you know, it is what, you know, my, my view, it is what it is. And, and to kind of push this a little forward, we've had men, folks come up to the microphone and say, "Listen, I don't have a schedule. I, I got to get a LISA. I got to get a, you know, a permit." And we have granted all of those, and we have an ordinance here that we're, we're just flying in the face of. So I said, "If we're going to give one person that..." It is what it is. We just, we did it.
Yeah, we have to follow the ordinance that we have in place now on the books, and we have to look at each individual coming to us and have them be approved or not approved based on the ordinance. If they meet the specifications for the ordinance we have on the books, we don't really have a jurisdiction to say, "Nope, we'll accept you, but we won't accept you."
But we have those island people who, and those short-termers that want to be able to
I got it.
We need to identify for them
Yeah, I got it. That's true.
For this summer, we do.
Yes, and there is in our, in our ordinance that there should be on the, on Dock F, the other side of the electric boat, that is a drop-off and pickup spot. And the problem is, we've never made it available. We've never marked it, because that meant, what we did with Adam Dow, Adam, was to try to get more than just one spot, and that's what the G was. But that F never got marked. It's a great place for people to come in, pick up passengers, and drop them off, only residents.
Yeah, and Jim, and Jim
And it's in our ordinance.
And Jim has that written down on this document.
Okay.
I'm talking, he, this year.
Yeah, it's written in the document.
He's asking, how do we solve it this year? I'm saying, it's there, put our sign up, and leave that open.
So
That's what the ordinance we have right now says, and we don't have anything there.
Hey, Jim, you are, keep going.
Okay, so I think we're going to hear more on dock, commercial dock, number one. Commercial dock, number two, for the exclusive use and docking in perpetuity of the vessel known as the Millie B. That's what, basically what I gleaned from what this board had motion. So that's what I put in. Commercial dock, number three, for the purpose of pickup and drop-off of passengers by commercial passenger vessel businesses, the MS Mount Washington should all have priority docking for perpetuity, which I believe captures what this board had motion previously.
You're correct.
And, Mr. Chairman, for Jim and everybody's benefit, this board, last year around this time, voted unanimously to declare the Millie B, the Mount, and the mailboat, at the time it was called, as, as legacy vessels.
We need to get that motion. We need to
Yeah, Amy provided that too. So it's in the, you know, the original packet that
Okay, I
We'll go find it, but Amy provided that
Let's go find it, because I have no problem with it, but I'd like it
Right.
Us to have the motion. I agree with you, but I would like to have the motion
Now, she provided that as a backgrounder, and we'll dig it up. The question that comes before us is, these three are, and, you know, my, my term, winners in, these are our winners. Ride and Mail Service, the Millie B and the Mount, they're the winners. And I think Big Sandy provided they negotiated, you know, in good faith for a pickup-dropoff with the Mount, they're the winners. The question is, are we going to pick any more?
So my question is, if you, what you just said earlier, Paul, is if Dock A, B, C, D, E, F, and G are all residential docks, then how do you put a mailboat at a residential dock?
Service, mail service.
Yeah, but
Mail service.
Well, there's a little confusion there, because you're saying these are residential use only
Mail service on the commercial docks. Somebody can come in and pick somebody up for mail service.
I'm going to have to reread our motion that says that A through G says for residential purposes only
You'll see it later on. It's in here.
And I think it says for, it says municipal
Right.
boats also, but now you're putting in a boat that's not a municipal boat.
It's a commercial boat. No, you read the motion later on. It'll clear it up.
Okay.
All right.
Jim?
Commercial barge vessel, there's, this was kind of edited from state statute. The state statute is very long relative to this, means any commercial vessel used as a common carrier of, but not limited to, equipment, materials, machineries, and vehicle. Private vessel, or, excuse me, commercial passengers' vessel, means any commercial vessel used as a common carrier of passengers, which carries passengers for hire, used by the proprietor, or by any officer, agent, or employee of such proprietor, and any school or camp for transportation of persons, or used as a restaurant or similar enterprise that takes members of the public aboard RSA 270E, and/or allow, and/or any such vessel rented by a rental agent. So that is right out of state RSAs.
So does, how does the mailboat fall into play with that RSA?
Mail service.
Carries passengers. Always has, correct. Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, is that Paul's motion might have to be amended to make G, Dock G, usable for your boat, or else it's not usable for your boat.
It's not usable for a boat. It's, it's used for, actually, A through G is for passengers, island guests, state and municipal vessels, period. That's what we voted on, four-to-one.
Jim?
Private vessel means any vessel, not a commercial vessel, propelled by electric, human, or mechanical power, used exclusively for pleasure purposes by its owner, or others by his permission, right out of the RSAs. Rental agent, I felt it was important to put this in under the RSAs, means any person as defined by RSA 272, Roman numeral two, accepting money or other valuables, consideration for the temporary use of vessels provided to members of the general public under RSA seven, 270E. And then, on the next page, I did put in 272, Roman numeral two. The person, the term person means an individual, firm, co-partnership, corporation, company, associated, or joint stock association, including any trustee, administrator, executor, receiving, assigning, or other personal representative thereof. So person for the term of rental agent, that defines it clearly, that basically everybody who is renting a boat falls under that
Mr. Chairman, for Jim, do we have any examples currently of rental agents, or are we, or not? Do we have any rental agents here, per se?
I think that we had, one of the businesses came in front of us and told us that they actually rent their boats to clients for the day.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
So I would like to add a definition
John, if I could, I just want to, I just want to clarify. So, so that, that says that I, I proffer a boating license, I show good faith insurance, and I can go down and have them deliver a boat to me, and off I go. And so later on, we're going to have a conversation about putting a, you know, a sticker on your windshield. So, and, and you get one. Remember the conversation about one?
We, we talked, we, yes.
So that's going to, that's going to, it's going to be an interesting conversation. Yeah.
But if he's renting a boat, all right, then that rental doesn't take him. We had a placard. I didn't have a sticker on it with a placard
Yeah, yeah.
So that if you rent it, you take your placard off.
Yeah, well, that's going to be interesting on the 20 minutes
Well, hey, you know what?
We'll just have to figure it out.
It's very hard to, to keep track of any of this, no matter what kind of thing
It's going to be very fast.
I'm sorry, John, I interrupted you.
So I'd like us to be able to find a definition for commercial insurance in the definitions section, so we have that clarified.
That is much trickier, and I'm actually, I've had multiple conversations with Nathan on this, and it depends on the type of business, type of insurance carriers. There are a lot of items that play on this one. So there's, there's more to follow on that, and there is a complete section on insurance that is not
I'm, I'm with, I'm with John on that. I want to know more about that, because we just had a recent incarnation where Primex had to weigh in on an application that an individual brought forward. So I, I agree, we probably need a little more texture on that. John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable doing it under 36-8, commercial vehicle insurance
Yeah.
requirement. I think that's a good place. It sounds like it's going to be complicated, and that we will have a special section for it.
Yep.
So I'm comfortable, which we have, we don't have the wording yet to do, but I think that really
Yep.
singles it out.
Yep.
That, it, it does, but it doesn't give a definition of commercial insurance.
But when we get there. I think Linda's saying is, we don't have the words in. Let's just get there.
So Dave, so I, I, I agree with Linda that it can be talked in that place, and I wanted to read this. Motion by Mr. O'Brien that effective first January, January 1st, 2026, Wolfborough Town docks, docks A through G, tell me anybody if I'm wrong, shall be used only for non-commercial purposes, as well as state and municipal boat parking. The post office is a federal organization, and passengers go on that boat, which makes it commercial. One dock space, preferably on Dock G, shall be reserved for passenger drop-off and pickup, and handicap ADA access. But it says, "Non-commercial operations." So how does the mailboat go on G if it has passengers on it, and someone is making money operating off of Dock G?
I don't know.
I just think we've made so many motions, as I've gone through, trying to figure out where we are, and how many motions that we've made, and some say one thing, and then we counted ourselves somewheres else. I think we can go through this, and if we can agree to that, then we can make a, a motion to get rid of any of our previous ones and lay everything out in one
As long as the loser of the motion doesn't move to reopen a motion that they lost in the first place.
Correct. So this motion will, I believe, we're going to have to reconsider this motion going forward to address the mailboat. That's all I'm saying.
Play that again, Brian.
I think we're going to have to reconsider this motion at some point for consideration of the mailboat, if the mailboat's going to be there.
Mail service.
It's a mailboat.
Delivering the United States Postal Service product.
So what does that have to do with anything?
They could, they could come in on a helicopter. Mail service.
Right now, it's a mailboat.
Actually, the
Actually
Chris Murray teed that one up at the first meeting, that we're not talking about a boat, we're talking about a service.
So the, so the state boat, what do we call on that boat?
State boat.
Is it, it's a federal
It's a state boat.
So if, if you were doing mail service, would that
On the water.
Would that be, would that fall under that same category of federal? No?
Yeah, I suppose we could have a conversation that says, if the vessel is limited only to providing United States Postal Service delivery and nothing else, we could probably have a conversation about that.
Because we have a state boat, that's the Marine Patrol. We have municipal boats, that's our electric, and our fire. But we have a mailboat that is personally owned, has a contract with the federal government to deliver mail, and delivers
All right.
and brings passengers on it. So this thing has multiple pieces, and it does not fit in Mr. O'Brien's motion.
Right.
Yep, so I'll give you one. On May 14th, 2025, Mr. Duchesne made the motion that the town of Wolfborough, for the 2026 season, will allow operations of four existing businesses with permit of commercial dock at Wolfborough, include the Blue Ghost Mailboat, Wake Winnie, Winnie Adventure, CW Charter, second by Mr. O'Brien. We, we voted and proved it four-to-one. We've got all sorts of conflicting motions, and that's my issue here.
Sure.
Let's just kind of look at this ordinance, and let's make it make sense, and then we can change any kind of motion
Yeah. So my motion made it
My name?
My motion, my motion made it so that the mailboat was part of all the boats that picked up and dropped off at the commercial dock, because it has commercial operations.
At the commercial dock.
At the commercial dock, and I agree with that.
I'm with that.
This doesn't say commercial dock.
Yeah, I'm with that.
He does say the commercial dock.
I'm with that.
Yep, yep.
I'm with that.
So there's a, there's a clear definition between the commercial dock and Dock G, where Dock G takes over, and everything goes to the right, and the commercial dock is that, that area, and you define that.
No person's land.
All right, Jim?
Jim?
Keep going.
Lead us forward.
Okay, vessel means every description of watercraft other than sea plane used, or capable of being used as a means of transportation over the water, RSA definitions. So those are the definitions that I have for you, which have been the basis for this, as I see it, ordinance. 36, 35
36, 35.
36, five.
36, five.
36, five. Limitations on use of town docks, wharves, and ramps, per order of the Board of Selectmen on May 14, 2025, effective January 1, 2026, Wolfborough Town Docks A through G shall only be used for non-commercial purposes, as well as state and municipal overnight, overnight board parking.
Boat.
Boat, thank you, Brian. Parking, subject to prior approval by the Wolfborough Select Board. One dock space on Dock G shall be reserved for passenger pickup and drop-off and ADA access. That is your motion from that night.
So one thing that could be done, we can look at that motion and change the word passenger, and I said this, to public. Public drop-off and pickup and ADA. I think that is a confusing term, passenger, because it sounds like the way we're defining commercial operations, that a public drop-off and pickup and ADA access.
I get to agree with you to clarify that passenger is a public.
Well, it means we have to reopen the whole motion. We have to just do a motion reconsider. That's what we have to do.
I just think.
At that time.
Yes, I think that's a good suggestion there. There's a possibility that we keep on moving on, or we're going to be here all night long.
We're already up to almost eight hours.
I'll take 12 if we do it right.
So you're going to want to revisit this motion.
As long as you spend that amount of time looking at our budgets.
Yeah, because we want to put in the word public in front of passenger, so it's better defined. So we need to modify it.
Do we really have to?
All right, you have to reopen the motion. Someone's going to have to vote.
We have to reopen the motion, and we're not doing it tonight.
We're not going to do it tonight.
At the point that we have to reopen the motion, change the wording, and vote on it again.
Okay.
Let's proceed, Jim.
Okay, item number one, that's a rollover from previous ordinance. Number two, vessel raid rental agent shall not rent or lease any watercraft to any other person from town docks without securing a license agreement from the town of Wolfborough. Licenses must follow provisions of RSA 270E 24 and 25, and all other laws and rules, regulations of the state of New Hampshire.
So just a point of information. So we have, we have, whatever the right words are, we are agreed that we have rented, provided a license of some sort of agreement for somebody who rents their vessel to somebody else. Is, are we following this part of the ordinance for what we did with that other party?
Well, I need clarification on which party, because we currently have a license agreement with the Jet Ski Company, who is operating this type of business, for all intents and purposes. I think if you're talking about Wake Winnie, who I believe had come here in front of us and said that they do that. No, we've never made provisions for that, because we never knew of such a definition in the RSAs.
So, and, and to go back to one quickly, we cannot enforce a commercial vessel floating dredge or barge 100 yards from our town docks. They're 300 feet away, they're in.
State waters.
State waters, and they can put down their anchors and do whatever they want, however they want, wherever they want. Any boat can out in our bay. We have no control over it at all. We have no enforcement.
Well, so if I understand correctly, Brian, you would, you would say let's boot item one. That's maybe something we want to talk about.
Yep.
But I'm back on number two, Jim. So if we believe that we have gone ahead and given the okay for somebody, not to mention any names, but it's not the Jet Ski Company, we need to, we need to, what do we need to do here? They're in violation of our ordinance. Or are we just going to say, let it roll?
Are we in violation of an ordinance if it's never been written in?
No, we're not.
Okay, so this is new language. This is, I was doing track changes with you again.
This is new language.
All right, I'm sorry. I take it back.
And then the question is, we're talking, is this is, we're doing this for, I wonder whether it falls for all our town docks because of, we may list the town docks that, but we do allow it on one of the railroad stations. So you can put in here, that's why we have defined it up on the docks what they are. We could define it to exclude the railroad station dock, in fact, apply to everything else, except for the railroad station.
Why would we carve them out?
We're doing it right now.
So we would carve them out?
Yes, we carve them out, yep.
And we'll have to have a conversation as to why we carve people in and carve people out. Okay.
Because we're doing it, yep.
Number three, that's a rollover from previous. Number four, that is a rollover from previous. We just changed term to Select Board. Number five, no vessel shall be docked on Dock F North Slip or Dock G South Slip. That area is reserved for municipal and state vessels. That was amended.
So when I looked at these north and south descriptions, and then looked at the map, the northern side of the docks is the shoreline, the southern side of the docks is out in the bay, the eastern side goes towards South Main Street.
Dave, pause.
The western side goes up North Main Street. When these descriptions were put in place, the north slip and the south slip were describing whether you were going up North Main or up South Main. So they're really not very descriptive as of today to understand. We may want to change the wording on these to make it standing from the shore facing southward, the dock farthest from the shore, the dock closest to the shore, the dock on the right, the dock on the left, so that people understand, and other boards five years down the road understand. Because I looked at this, and if I use compass headings, it's completely different than if I decide to use the road heading.
So tighten up the location.
Why don't we just put east and west?
Correct. I think this is an easy fix, and I, Brian is right. From my recollection, this was just done to align with North Main Street to South Main Street, so these are easily correctable.
I was told by somebody, if I don't have a compass, I wouldn't know where I was going.
Okay, so we're comfortable just changing it to east and west?
Yep.
I mean, that was my original suggestion, but I had somebody tell me that if I don't have a compass, I don't know which way I'm going. But most boats have compasses too.
And any road will get you there. Okay.
You got a cell phone.
Can I, Dave, can I go back?
To what?
I want to go back to number four. I'm assuming, I'm going to, no, I'm going to withdraw. Never mind, never mind. I'm not going to do it.
It's permitted.
No, 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 I found my error. I, when I was reading this last night, I made a margin note on item four. I said Libby Lot, and I noticed that I'm under the wrong heading, because this is limitations of use of town docks.
And the Libby Dock is one of the town docks.
It's later. We're going to talk about that later. Thank you.
By the way, we defined it up above, I believe.
But I do want to go to number six, because I think, Linda, you pointed out.
It's part of the problem using town docks.
We're not there yet.
I'm sorry. No, never.
So number six, exemption Dock G South Slip, closest to the shoreline, shall be reserved for short-term passenger pickup, drop-off, and ADA access. Again, I just mirrored what was in the language, so this needs to be modified, and that'll be corrected.
That would say, that would be Dock G North Slip is the one that's closest to the shoreline.
Well, I'm just poking at the, or picking up on Linda's comment back at the beginning of time. Where'd you get the 20 minutes? Because I had just, I made a margin note to myself in this one, is 20 minutes, 10 minutes?
So there's, there's no minutes listed on this one.
I got it.
So I think that's a Board of Selectmen decision that's got to be nailed down.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Jim, when you're using town docks, you're feeling that all the docks were relating to when we use town docks.
Until we get into specifics, yes.
So then Libby would be included.
Just want to make sure everybody's agree.
Yep. Town docks, under definitions, the docks owned and maintained by the town of Wolfborough, and located at dockside, at the Libby Museum in Winter Harbor, and at Mass Landing and Back Bay.
Okay, then my question number four does.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate you catching me on this one. So if I look at item four, it says no equipment, supplies, material, blah, 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 at the docks, wharves, or parking areas. Well, that's not happening at the Libby. At the Libby Museum, there are.
Except for barge operations at the Libby Museum.
Well, if I could just finish, and then you can, you can step on it. We are storing, or seeing stored, trucks, loading platforms, equipment at the Libby. Are we, as we have done with others, are we, are we saying, well, it's okay, even though it's in our ordinance that says it's not?
I believe you're right, because I've seen it, and I think people are taking liberties, because there's a sign on the Libby Museum that says C-L-O-S-E-D.
That doesn't, but that doesn't say closed, have at it and tear up our parking lots. It says the Libby's closed. No, I got it.
That's what's happening now.
What do we do about that?
Well, in reality, it becomes a liability if some youngster comes down there and is playing on it, because it's also a loading area for personal watercraft.
Fishing boats.
So three of us agree.
Oh, no.
That's a good.
So what are we going to do?
I'll change my mind then.
So what, so what do we do about it? We can, A, ignore it, B, vague it out, or C, do something. What do we want to do?
I think there's mechanisms for the barges if they don't play nicely later in the document, and I think we'll get to those.
So let's park that and come back, Brian, because you may be right, but I'm going to hold you to it if we, because that could be in the vagging it out. Okay.
If it's not there, we'll add something.
All right, thank you.
So under the commercial barge, section 39, nine, section eight, storage of materials is prohibited at all sites, including the Libby Museum. So if they are actually doing that, then they're actually violating the existing ordinance.
Do we have any enforcement? We don't have a fine, a fee, pull their permit, or anything like that, though, at this point?
Well, I think it would behoove us, if we're seeing those entities abusing the storage of materials there, for us to know about it, and we give them a call and ask them to please coordinate better, or we'll take corrective measures.
And maybe what we have to do in the barge landing is do what I may propose later. One strike, you break the rules, your permit's pulled, you're done.
So, and since we're not going to solve it yet, there's another option, which is try to understand why they're storing this stuff, and is there an opportunity to provide bulkhead service or something down there? That's a kind of way on the other side of that one, but something to think about. But fact is, at least sample size of me, and I think Brian will agree, we are seeing storage of materials, trucks, stuff, broadsided across the parking lot, and clearly it has nothing to do with the fact that the Libby Museum is closed. It has to do with the fact that they're doing something they're not supposed to do.
And, and I think we come back to, as we first send a letter, somebody's got to get the name, and then we ask them to stop it.
Pictures.
You can go with pictures, and then we need to take action.
Yep.
That's, that's what we need to do.
So I've got this in the bring it up under the vague it out side.
To take action, we have to have an enforcement policy, which we don't have.
You can, you may be able to take a picture, but if the barge isn't there, it's not going to, you're not going to have a connection to who's responsible for the product.
Actually, I've taken a picture, and I have the name of the vessel, just right.
Yeah, most of the vessels have names, and so do their pickup trucks.
You're closest to that. Why don't you take over that project?
No, no. Brian's closer.
No, he's not.
I nominate Paul to be the barge enforcement officer for the town of Wolfborough.
All right.
Salary of $1.
Okay, so moving right along, eight is rolled over from the previous, nine is rolled over from the previous, 10 is rolled over from the previous, and 11 is rolled over from the previous.
And question, what's the one hour gap? 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and no docking of boats at, at 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. What do we do between 12:00 AM and 1:00 AM?
I would say that it's probably a typo on my part, Brian.
Jim owes us five cents for the typo.
Yep, get your enforcement measures out.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Unrelated, but related, one of the things we did talk about earlier, and I won't, I won't, we don't want to talk about it in detail, but I did ask John McDonald to please provide us with the, you know, kind of the rules of what we need to do to move the buoys. And I have it here. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory, and perhaps after the season closes, we should put this on the agenda for a conversation about moving those buoys.
And there is also, I got the ones on how to be able to move them further back from the swim lines at Cary Beach. There's a process.
Yes. This, you know, this, this RSA 270, colon, 12, does have provisions of how you can move buoys, and John was kind enough to give us, I mean, it's, it's almost easy, other than the fact you've got to collect 25 signatures from people, is what the language is to get these things moved. So we could, we can maybe make some progress on that at the end of the voting season.
And when I talked to the state Marine Safety and Patrol, they actually told me that the little white house beside Cary Beach, probably as a public residence, either doesn't have permits, or may, but if they do have permits, their permits for a, for a public house don't extend out as far as our Cary Beach, and they're not allowed to tie their, or have their buoys come within 10 feet of our property. And their buoys come right to where our buoys end over at Cary Beach.
Yep.
So that's another piece that we can look at.
Okay.
36, six, Jim?
36, six, Island, Wolfborough Island residents, boat docking, and boat trailer parking. This section was very, very complicated, and made it very challenging for somebody who understands ordinances to read, and it makes it even more difficult for the layperson to be able to read. So I broke it out based on island resident boat docking, island resident trailer parking, and then the next section was boat trailer parking. Now, I did take some liberties here, because it was not defined terribly well in our existing ordinance. It just said island residents. This obviously has got to be a board decision, but I put the term Wolfborough Island residents in here, because that was not clearly defined. I'm not sure if that's something that the board wants, or if they just want it as island residents. That's for you to consider. But it reads, Wolfborough Island residents and visitors are subject to the following provisions of the Dock and Wharves Ordinance, which applies to docking their boats and parking of their boat trailers. Wolfborough Island residents and visitors should contact the Billing and Collections Office at the Wolfborough Town Hall to determine if they are eligible to receive boat docking and trailer parking permits.
I have no objection in what you just did. In fact, it provides, I think, more clarity for Brenda, who doesn't have to sit there and try to arbitrate whether you is or you ain't an island resident of the town of Wolfborough. I think it's, it's just clarity, that's good.
So I have one addition. Wolfborough Island residents and their visitors, because island residents and visitors, visitors could be anybody.
Point taken.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand the difference, but that's okay. I'll go along for the ride.
So the intent is for Wolfborough Island residents and visitors that visit them that have a boat.
Okay.
If you, if you read it literally, it says Wolfborough Island residents and visitors. So island resident boat docking, the Select Board will issue a boat parking permit to island residents, one per household upon application and proof of island residency. Said sticker shall be affixed to the windshield, or in the case of a boat which does not have a windshield placed in a readily visible location.
So now we're making them come to us and not, right? So now we're making them come to us, and not, right now, Brenda does it, her office. They go in, they show the documentation. This is now making them come to us, because we have to issue-
Well, okay, I see what you're saying. I, I think the board can, does have the ability to delegate this to the billing and collections office.
I agree with that. I don't think, I don't think we need to have a public hearing on anybody.
I'll look into that.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if somebody's reading this, in front of look to come to us, and I'm saying, that's not where we're coming. Absolutely, we can delegate, but I thought we were trying to make this easy for people to understand.
I agree with that, Linda, I totally. So we could change that to say, the town's billing and collection office will issue a boat parking permit to island residents.
Yep, that's what I'm hoping for.
So remove select board and insert billing and collection department.
Yep.
Duly noted. So we have a, we have a small discrepancy, one per household upon application of proof of island residency. If you have a island visitor, you're gonna need another one.
One per household.
One permit.
So you, I see John's point. If somebody brings a boat to visit somebody on an island, and I would say-
Because it's supposed to be on the, affixed to the windshield.
Yeah, so I would say what the intent is, that if somebody comes and brings their boat to use, their trailer goes somewhere else, and their boat doesn't go to an island spot. They can use their boat as if they were visiting the town in general, but they don't get the privileges of being a resident.
You know, I think what we're talking about is, you're an island resident, you're gonna go away for a couple days, you need a place to leave your boat. That's what I think we're talking about here.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm-
If you are island resident, and somebody comes and puts a boat in, they come and they put it, and they go to your island.
Correct, and then, and they, so they should be able to get a sticker.
Why do they need a sticker if they're not gonna-
Put their trailer somewhere.
They wanna come in and go grocery shopping.
Then they go to the town docks, like any other person on the lake.
And allocate a space for them over here.
I agree with the way Jim wrote it, that it goes to, there's one for the person who owns the house, and that's it. If somebody comes to visit with their boat, they are, they are not entitled to the same-
I think that's-
...benefits of the person who lives in town, pays taxes, and owns the house on the island.
Well-
Their trailer could go at that person who owns the house on the island.
But we're not talking about a trailer here. We're talking about a dock space.
Correct.
You're getting mixed up here. What, because we say a boat parking permit, it's, you come down to the trailer before. We're talking where you can leave your boat.
Yeah, and so-
As an island person, and the island person's like a mast landing, can leave it on the outside when they go and they leave for a period of time.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about here.
I don't know as if we're ticketing boats on the dock in the first place.
We're not.
And again, do we have an enforcement piece? Is there a fine or a penalty? No.
So, so the question would be, why, why are we asking them to put a-
Because I think our, our end goal is that we do, do some ticketing and patrolling of those. That's why we put it in. If we don't plan to do it, I'm with you, John, don't put it in.
So here you go. Now, it just, you just triggered my mind, John. My two boys, when we had a house out on Cow Island 15 years ago, took their boat, our little 14-footer, drove it from Cow into Back Bay and parked at the dock, they were like 10, nine and 10, that said, island docking. They thought they were doing the right thing. They came home with a $25 ticket.
Okay, so I, can I just-
So somebody did actually ticket them when they parked at the Wolfboro Town docks with a boat from Tuftonboro.
I just, you know, as I look at this and read it, I'm, I'm asking myself, is, on a, on a one to 10, is this a one or a 20? And I think it's a, it's, it's not a big item. I'd leave it as is, other than change that the select board take them out, and Brenda will issue the, the sticker, one. You know, if somebody, if somebody says, listen, I'm coming in and I want, I want two, I think we can let Brenda figure that out. That would-
I, I think some of the reasons why we do it to one, there's not a whole lot of space.
Yeah.
And so I think we are limiting it in order to-
No, I agree, but I'm, I'm not sure that this, this is, this is, you know, of all the things we're worried about, this one, to me, doesn't rise to the level, and we need to be concerned about this. It's personal opinion.
Yeah, we can, we can either say the billings and collection department will issue, or we can say the select board authorizes the billings and collection-
We do that by virtue of the ordinance.
Do it.
Thank you.
I don't think we've had any issues with, uh, so we should, I'm with everybody else. Just leave it alone.
Just leave it the way it is.
Now, the only, the thing we're doing here is, these, these docks in the Back Bay, in order to get on those docks, you gotta have a little cheesy runabout to get under the docks, and so we can't, you know, they can't bring in their, their center console, got that part. But I, I'm not sure this is a big issue.
I don't think it is. Let's just get going.
Keep going, Jim.
Okay, so two and three, they're just historical rollovers from previous ordinances. Island resident trailer parking, so we broke out trailer parking. As you know, we're trying to, with gearing up pop whaling in the late summer, we were talking about Filterbed Road, so you're gonna see some language change here relative to Filterbed Road. The select board will issue island taxpayers of Wolfboro and their visitors on, visitors and island boat trailer permit. The permit will authorize island residents to park their boat trailers at Filterbed Road parking lot.
This, again, will be the billing, the billing department?
Yeah, Brenda.
Correct. I'll make that amendment. Owners of boat trailers parked at Filterbed Road without an island boat trailer parking permit will be ticketed and towed under the authority of the Wolfboro Police Department. Towing will be at the expense, owner's expense. Now, this is one of the areas that it gets a little bit tricky, because is this where we want people to be able to put their boat trailers for a couple of days? Is there, is there a timeframe that we want people to be able to park there without having to secure a permit? I, I, I think that this needs some consideration as far as timeframe.
I, I guess my question is, do we have an issue with people who want to put their boat in, and we, and want to leave their trailer there, come in for the day to fish, or do we have plenty of space? If we have plenty of space, then it doesn't make any difference. If we don't have plenty of space, it does make a difference on how long we keep them allowed.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't think we've had a problem, Linda. I think right now, we've got three of them out to pop whaling. You know, it seems like the boat, boating community, and the way that they handle their, their trailers and their vehicles, are respectful and know where they need to park.
I don't have an issue.
And then the other question is, who's sitting around with the stopwatch saying, you checked in at Thursday at 9:00, and you gotta be out of there Friday at 2:00?
There may be a day that we want to start charging for boat permits, like we do dump permits and beach permits and things like that. So the way I looked at this and the, and if you go down to thirty-six, seven, four, when you're talking about Glendon Street, could we have the billing department issue a five-day or a seven-day, I think we should up it to seven, because people spend a week vacation. Should we do a seven-day permit, a short-term permit, and do a seasonal permit for a trailer?
Hey, wait a minute, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Wait.
Jim, you wanna keep going on?
Yeah, so this is still regarding islands. All, all boat trailers must be parked perpendicular to the edge of the parking lot, parallel parking, and that's supposed to go into the towed language. That is, will be ticketed and towed under the authority of Wolfboro Police Department. Towing will be at the owner's expense. That somehow got chopped out of there. Boat trailers may be parked in the Filterbed Road parking lot from April 1 through the 3rd Monday in October. The owner of any boat trailer left onsite outside of the above dates will be ticketed and towed under the authority of the Wolfboro Police Department. Towing will be at the owner's expense.
And I don't know the answer to this, Jim, but on item four, I mean, is it appropriately marked out there, hey, you know, it's, you gotta be out of here by the 3rd Monday, you know?
I don't think it is yet, Paul.
But you'd notice it, you'd put up a sign.
They're, they're cleaning up from the construction.
Yeah.
So that area will get cleaned up, and there'll be an area identified for the board's approval.
So if we agree to do this, which we're, I think we're gonna, you just say, okay, you know, 4-1 to whatever the end date is, you gotta, you can have it, you can after that. Got it?
I, I guess, I have no problem with the Filterbed. I'm wondering about the Glendon Street.
That's the next one.
There may be a, I mean, Filterbed, they leave them any length of time. I thought the Glendon Street was more for the fisherman who comes in, drops his boat, and goes back, leaves it, comes back, and picks up his boat and goes. So I think there's two different types of parking we have there, and we may want to break them out into two different lines.
So it is kind of in the next section a little bit, Linda, there. Button up six, the town takes no responsibility for boat trailers that are damaged or stolen, lost, stored on town property. Section thirty-six, seven, boat trailer parking, and this ties into the, the Glendon Street parking. Boat trailer, and this is mostly pulled across from the previous ordinance, with some minor changes. Boat trailer parking shall be authorized at the following locations under the following conditions. Boat trailer parking on municipal property is limited to the Glendon Street parking lot at the end of Glendon Street, the Mast Landing parking area, and the Filterbed parking area. There will be a $15 penalty, there will be a penalty of $15 for each boat trailer parked on town roads and streets, with an additional 15, penalty of $15 if the trailer is attached to a tow, towing vehicle. Exceptional motor vehicle with a boat trailer may park temporarily for a maximum of a quarter of an hour in any public parking space.
Question?
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, you wanna go?
I just wanted to know, when was the last time we updated these $15 penalties? Because parking for $15 for a day is pretty cheap.
It should be 150.
1,500.
All right, so, thank you for the, thank you for the monetary discussion. Mike, I think Linda, Linda teed up a question here, which I think we, it's got my mind working here. So Glendon Street is what I would characterize as short-term parking. You're in for a, you know, whatever the period of time is, 4, 6, 8, 10, you're in, you're out. Is Mast Landing, Linda, short-term parking?
Well, that one's, no, I think some of the people who are out on the island do leave their boats there, I mean, their trailers there. That one, I'm not sure of.
And Filterbed Road is definitely-
Long-term.
Long-term parking.
So, so I kinda, I kinda think that Mast Landing is a short-term parking location.
The point I'm trying to make here is-
Or should be.
We wanna, I think we want to be clear with folks that say, you're, you're parking on Glendon Street, this is the short-term parking lot. It's like going down to Logan. You can park right up close to the gate, that's short-term parking, and, and I don't know what the fee should be, but that's short-term parking. You're only in there for a defined period of time. Long-term parking is, is Filterbed Road, and then, I, I can't comment on Mast Landing, because I don't-
I think Mast Landing, I think it falls with what we're saying. I think that it would be short-term.
Yeah, because what would happen at Mast Landing, so understanding if you're doing short-term, your, your vehicle's still attached to your trailer.
I, I think so.
That's a good one.
And if you're long-term, and you've disconnected, and the trailer's just sitting there, that's a, you've-
That should be Filterbed Road. I think that's it. Yeah, I think that's exactly-
Or you stole the car.
Except I've had a long conversation with a gentleman in town who is an elite bass fisherman, and he says that when he parks his trailer on the Glendon, Glendon Street lot, he has to disconnect his car from it, because his car will go out into the regular parking area. Then he parks his car somewhere in the Glendon Street lot, in a safe place. Then he says cars come and park poorly in the Glendon Street lot, and he can't back back in to get his trailers out. So it, it becomes very problematic down there.
Yeah.
I think we were talking about Mast Landing specifically.
I think we're trying to define between what should be day parking and what should be long-term.
Correct.
That's what's, we're trying to get here.
And, and I bring it up, because item four in, in thirty-six, seven says, shall not exceed five days, and I said, you know, Glendon Street to me, again, it strikes me as, that's a short-term lot. We want to see turnover. Filterbed, that's a long-term lot.
Yeah.
We want to see folks going in there and either, you know, leaving the trailer and the, whatever.
But, but there's-
So, Jim, if there's, and I don't, I don't want to mix up your, your flow here, but if there's somewhere we could, we could say, hey, we have a portfolio of parking opportunities for you, short-term and long-term.
So the difference, I think, what we're talking about, though, is if they park long-term at Filterbed, they're an island resident, or they're an island visitor.
How are you gonna tell the difference?
Well, that's-
We don't have anybody down there with a stopwatch and a, you know, looking at it. How do you tell the difference?
And if we're at Glendon Street or Mast Landing, you're, you're a short-term, you're fishing, you're, you're that type of a person. So the, so my impression was, people were parking them at Abenaki, because they were island residents, storing their trailers for the season.
But it, but they get a permit to do that.
Correct.
So when it comes out there, is a permit, it's long-term, they get it. And when we're talking here, Filterbed Road has to be that long-term with a permit, and Glendon Street and Mast Landing should be short-term, does not require a permit. They, that the Glendon Street and the Mast Landing are short-term and do not require a permit.
Correct, so if you're, if you are a fisherman, and you park at Filterbed, and you don't have a permit, you're potential to get towed or removed, because you don't identify with a permit. So, I mean, I, I guess, sitting here, listening to this conversation, if we identify Filterbed Road as a long-term parking area, is there a need for us to issue island residents a parking permit for their trailer? There may not be. It may not, just be a duplication of work.
Well, the only thing could be that if, if I wanted to, I could just launch my boat and then put my trailer over there. And I'm not an island resident of Wolfboro, and my trailer's over there long-term, and nobody knows what it is and what it isn't.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's the problem. You're gonna get people who will just have, live on the lake, that are just gonna park their trailers up there.
You're right. Nope, that's absolutely right. Nope.
So that was, that was, that's the idea of the permit. The permit says, you're an island resident, you, you don't have anywhere to store your trailer.
Absolutely.
And-
Yep.
Most of the people that come up, too, if they stay a week, they stay at a place that will offer them parking for their trailer, I assume. So Glendon and Mast Landing should be short-term parking. Filterbed is long-term parking for island residents, and, and we're all done. And you get a permit from the billing department for either Mast, Mast Landing or Glendon, and you get a permit from the billing department for Filterbed.
So would it be, would it be this board's thought that we, if we made the Glendon Street parking lot less than 24 hours, is, is that, is that a fair timeframe, or do you want it shorter? No, I, I, I-
I would say 24 hours. 24 hours parking. One day, you get it out the next day, in case somebody comes up for a Saturday, Sunday.
Our police are busy enough doing other things. They're, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't really want to tax them with checking on boat trailers to see if they've been there for 24 hours. I mean, that's-
So then we, but we can label it, it's a short-term 24 hours.
You could put the sign up.
Correct.
I think what we're trying to do is not have the guy come. I mean, I've seen there, there's a trailer, sits there a long period of time, nobody around, no boats around. It sits there.
Most people follow the rules. Most people do.
So what, so what do you want to do about somebody that leaves there? Because that's basically like, that's like somebody coming to stay on vacation and then just, they're just storing their boat.
I think we're trying to put something up on in a sign that says, that's not what this is for. That's what I see. It's the guy, person who did it, been doing it, nobody's told them that they can't.
Correct.
Don't put anything that says, we don't want you to do that.
And if it become, and like Linda said, if it becomes flagrant, and there's a trailer that's there for about three or four weeks, then the police will do something about it. They'll be like, this is just an abandoned trailer, tow it out.
What do you think, Paul?
It always comes down to enforcement, and, you know, and the, the hammer. We're trying to do the right thing. Glendon Street, I'd say, you know, it's a self-reporting thing. Stick around for 24 hours, but that's about it, you're out of here. That would be the way- That would be the word, I'd say, you know, please, you know. Otherwise, then we're trying to say, well, should we be thirty-six hours? Do they need another sticker? How do we
There's no sticker.
If, you know, if the, if the police see a trailer that's been disconnected and it's there over and over and over again, they'll run the plate and they'll do what they have to do. But I'd just say, kind of do an honor, we're not making money out of this thing. We're not trying to enforce this thing. We're just trying to say, please, you know, take, don't take advantage of us, keep your trailer here for twenty-four hours and then move on.
So Paul, would you say Mast Landing, the same, twenty-four hours?
I can't really comment on Mast Landing, because I don't hang around over there. Linda, what are your, what are you
I don't, I'll tell you the truth, I don't hang around Mast Landing either, so.
We throw the lab in the water.
I do, I'm there every day.
Okay, so then, what do you see?
I go walk there every day.
So twenty-four hours?
No, I mean
Yeah, twenty, I mean, yeah.
You made the comment, you never there, he's telling us, he sees we're there.
Twenty-four hours?
Tell us what you see.
Most of the, most of the time, what I see is, I see people that come in, they launch their boat, they go out, go fishing, they do their thing, then they, then they pack up and they're out of there. Whether or not it's on a Sunday afternoon, or, you know, they come, they may come for Thursday, you may see a disconnected trailer there, but by the, by Sunday night or Monday morning, if they're still there on Monday morning, it's an issue.
And I see a similar thing, I sit at Bean Park and have an ice cream and, with Suzie, and, you know, it's a nice warm night like this, someone's bringing in their little, their little twelve-foot boat with a motor on it, and they're going out, they're coming back later on. They, twenty-four hours, max, be done.
I would do twenty-four hours or two days, in case somebody comes and stays a weekend somewhere, then they, they put, they launch their boat at ten, one morning, and then it's there till five the next night. So either one, I'm okay with, either twenty-four hours or two days.
I say you put the twenty-four hour sign up, and then, and then if the cruiser wants to cruise in there and the thing's still there on Monday morning, then you can make note of it.
Right, okay.
Perfect.
And I think it's a self-policing thing, you know.
That's exactly right.
The boaters are going to see the same trailer there, day after day after day, and they're going to, they're going to call.
Especially if they can't find a place to put theirs.
Correct.
So Glendon and Mast are twenty-four hours, and
Do you have any timeframes that you want to consider regarding Filter Bed Road at all?
Filter Bed is just seasonal island, seasonal parking for island residents, island, Wolfboro Island residents' trailers.
Based on what we just said before.
Yeah, April first to the third, Monday in October.
So now, why did you, you said the third Monday in October?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because that's what we discussed last time.
Correct.
Okay, and then, failure of any boat trailer owner to comply with the ordinance will be ticketed, and trailer will be towed under the authority of Wolfboro Police Department, towing will be at the owner's expense. There was a section in here, marinas, and it refers to private property essentially. No overnight occupancy of boats docked or moored at any marina shall be permitted unless adequate toilet facilities, as approved by the Wolfboro Health Officer, are available at the marina. I'm not sure that this actually belongs in this ordinance.
We don't have a marina. We ain't got one of those. So it wouldn't apply.
Oh.
I don't think so.
So I took it out, because I, I don't think it applies at all to this.
I don't think so.
Because we're talking about private property as well. Section thirty-six eight, commercial vessel insurance requirements, this would be both for barge and passenger, more to follow, Nathan and I have been communicating regularly on this one.
So to that commercial vessel insurance, and if somebody were want to use that commercial vessel insurance for their commercial vessel landing down at the docks, because basically we're down to, we're down to four, and to the emails that you had gotten back from Nathan, whether or not we were going to do the licensing or the ordinance, I think that was, that would fall under that licensing agreement. Is that, is that the way I'm reading this?
So, that is one of the interesting provisions, the way that I understood what Nathan was saying. For example, a boat that is coming in with six hundred passengers on it may have some significantly different insurance requirements than a jet ski company.
Correct.
But I think they all have to hit those minimums that we, as a town, have, and those minimums are a million and a two million aggregate. You know, now we're seeing policies that outline unlimited aggregate, but we have to get a copy of the policy, and we have to read all the provisions within the policy to ensure that there's no formal loophole, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So what I understood about Nathan's email was, you can't predict for every scenario in a permitting process, that's why you use the leasing agreement, so
Licensing.
License agreement, so that you can craft it special for that situation.
Correct. And the clarification of a lease and a license is, a lease is an exclusive, an exclusive use, generally, an exclusive use for a long-term period. A license agreement allows multiple uses for the same property for shorter or longer terms.
So, that's when I was thinking, some of this ordinance that we're discussing could be moot, because if we go to a licensing agreement rather than a permitting process, we won't be using the ordinance, because we'll be using the license agreement.
You're right, but having the ordinance in place makes it so that your license agreement can be short and concise, and follow the ordinance provisions.
I understand that, but I'm just going to what the attorney wrote.
I think that
What?
From what Jim said, there is more information going to be coming from Nathan on this?
Specific to the insurance.
Not the license.
So, I'm not going to get into that.
Yeah, that's why I asked Jim, because I don't, without Nathan giving us some kind of a boilerplate, I don't know how to fit a license agreement into this section, whether we need it or not need it, until we have a format in what he's going to use, and whether we're going to use a boilerplate, or are we going to use a boilerplate that's ninety-five percent of it, and then there's five percent that we vary. I just, I, it's hard without seeing some kind of an example of how he sees us doing it.
It says right here that we're going to get more language from Nathan, so I think
Well, that's for insurance, we're talking license agreements.
We're now on thirty-six nine, and that is a license agreement. I thought that's where we went.
I didn't think we had gotten there yet, but now we're at thirty-six nine.
Sorry. I thought we were.
No.
Wish him title well.
At least I didn't.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, so, this, I broke out very specifically, commercial barge vessel landing license regulations and fees. With the exception of the ramp and dock at the Libby Museum, there shall be no docking, loading, or unloading commercial vessel barges at any town dock, wharf, landing, or right-of-way owned by or under control of the Town of Wolfboro. Commercial barge vessel use of the dock and ramp at the Libby Museum shall be allowed by commercial barge vessel license only, subject to the following conditions. Excuse me. Each commercial barge vessel shall comply with New Hampshire, state of New Hampshire regulations, numbering, inspection, operation requirements, as well as all other New Hampshire state laws, rules, and regulations. Name of the vessel, home port, address, telephone number, and the operator or owner commercial barge vessel landing license. Each vessel will be required, will be, each vessel will require a commercial barge vessel landing license, placard that includes the vessel's bow number. No commercial barge vessel landing license will be issued until all of the prior year's fees have been paid. This is an area where I was still a little bit confused on where you guys were. Hours of operations shall be from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and from seven AM to one PM on Sunday, limited to one or two hours, I'm not sure where you guys were at, for loading and unloading, and no commercial vessel, vessel barge activity at the town docks will be permitted on Sundays. So I think we got to clarify whether we're one or two hours.
I know that John talked to someone that said that they could do it in a half an hour, but I did talk to Jim Bean, to Cody Kretschmer, to Luke Freudenberg, three of them, oh, and I can't remember his name, the owner of Watermark Marine. And those four said that it can take, between unloading a barge that is a complete demolition of a camp, and hauling it away can take a lot more than a half an hour.
Of course.
They do know, they do say that if they see a barge comes in that only needs a fifteen or a twenty-minute drop to get a dump truck off or something, they will pull, get out of the way, and let another one go. And they have told me, those four guys, and I only talked to four, said that the barge companies are generally very respectful of each other, because they all know they're doing the same thing. We're currently two hours, aren't we?
I'm just going to remind people, I'm not going to speak to this.
So what, so Brian, what's the point?
From what I've been told, there isn't a restriction of two hours or less at any other barge facility on the lake, any landing facility on the lake, and that the four owners I talked to said that they, like the two-hour maximum limit, when they only need a half an hour, that's what they use, when they need more, that's what they use.
So what's the language that you would recommend?
I would leave it at the two hours that we've had.
So I would have to say that Jim Bean was the one that told me twenty minutes, and no more than twenty minutes.
So he told me a different story, because he's done all the work for us out on Cow Island for the last two years.
So I told him, I was like, that's a little hard, I said, why don't we go an hour? And he said, no, twenty minutes. And I said, no.
So now we have conflicting from the same guy.
You do.
Yeah. There you go.
But if you leave it the way it is now, it doesn't really matter, because they seem to take care of themselves.
Yeah, Jim Bean's done three septic systems for us, and two years of work on Cow.
Couldn't get the first one right. All right, so, so we're on, we're on the thirty-six nine, Jim?
I think it, I think it also frees up other people who want to use the landing spot so that they can put their boats in.
Correct.
If you've got people there that are there for two hours, you're sealing off the public that want to put their boat in. So I would, I would say that we should reduce it to an hour, for that reason.
So you can make that as a motion when we
Correct.
Okay, so could I speak to number nine, Jim?
We will when we get there.
I would like to, I would like to speak on three. The home port, address, telephone number, operator, owner, commercial barge vessel landing license, should we have a copy of the commercial operator's permit? Should we know that the person running the barge, who's going to be crashing into our dock, has a boating certificate that is a commercial certificate, and he's operating the boat under the right license?
Well, do we require that for the other commercial operators?
We may be when we get to that point. That's another one
Like, you know, the characters out on the front docks?
So are you asking for them to provide their captain's license, Brian?
Yeah, it's, I don't know if it's called the captain's license, what is it called? Is it, is it a commercial boating certificate?
Yeah, commercial boater's license.
Commercial boater's license.
Okay, I'll add that in.
Okay.
Seven, no overnight barge parking, barge vessel docking shall be allowed. Eight
Can you add to that, Jim, including the breakwater?
Oh, it's not a breakwater, what is it called?
It's breakwall.
We have a name for it.
I call it a breakwall.
Draw front retaining wall.
That's, that's close.
That too.
Yeah, that's, that's close.
Okay, added. Eight, storage of materials is prohibited at all sites, including the Libby Museum. Nine, parking of construction vehicles is prohibited in the parking lot in front of and at the rear of the Libby Museum.
So this gets down to the question of
Seawall, that's what it's called.
A seawall, how about that?
Yeah, that's what it's called, a seawall.
Thank you, okay. Some wall. So this gets down to, and sadly, it is happening, it gets down to a question of enforcement, which I don't, not real comfy with it, but it's happening.
What's happening?
People are parking their trucks, broadside in front of the Libby, people are parking construction equipment in the back of the Libby, and leaving it there for a better part of a half a day. Trailers, you know, all stuff. And I'm not saying, I feel bad for the people, because, you know, they don't have any other place to do this, but it's happening. So either we flex this ordinance, or we enforce it.
So, so if I'm not mistaken, isn't there roadside parking on one side of the road?
No, no, it's marked as no parking.
It's Libby-only parking.
No, no, you can't park on, on
Oh, on the sidewalk, I thought you meant the three, the three of course.
There's no parking on Lang Pond Road, you can't do it. So either we flex the ordinance, and say, well, it's kind of okay, sorta, or we enforce it.
So to the best of my recollection, we never had an issue with all the commercial vehicles and stuff there when the museum was open, because I think that our museum director would have called the town manager or the police department and said, we have a bunch of vehicles here in the way of our parking, please come take care of them. Because the museum is vacant now, we have lost that enforcement piece.
Well, sample size of our, our director of the Libby, Jim, had she ever mentioned to you that she had issues with people parking behind the Libby?
Yeah, it had been mentioned in the past, and in the past, we've sent the police department down under the existing ordinance to handle it.
So the, again, the question stands, and I don't know how we fix it here tonight, maybe not, but this is one of these, we're going to vague it out, we either enforce an ordinance, or we flex it.
We've got a lot of flexing to do.
That's right, we're going vague again, we're going into the foggy land.
So, so essentially, what we may end up having to do, Paul
Yeah.
Is where that roadside area is right there, where it's really more of a hazard for traffic, we would put signs up, no, no construction vehicles, equipment parked here.
So Lang Pond Road, heading, heading towards the pond, is signed already, no parking.
No, I'm saying on, right there in front of the Libby dock, right there.
There are, there's a sign there now.
It says Libby Parking Only.
Only.
At those, and I've seen, that when I went by the other day, there was two large pickup trucks there with a barge name on them, end to end, like that, you saw the same thing I saw, parking in spots that they never would have, because the Libby director would have called and had the police come. So we've lost our enforcement piece, because we don't have somebody at the museum to enforce.
But that's not the job of the people who run the Libby's?
No, it isn't, but that's what, that's what was keeping, that's what was keeping things in, in check.
You are correct, Mr. Thurston. So we can vague this one out, I'm going to put this in the Go Fuzzy thing, either enforce the ordinance or ignore it, one or the other.
So if people parked illegally in front of the town hall, I'm guessing that a town hall employee would be the one that addressed it, saw it, and would tell Jim Pino, and Jim would contact the police department. So the Libby was working the same way. That's the way enforcement works in most towns. A citizen or a person sees it, calls and tells, the police are not running around looking for every jaywalker and every person who's parked fifteen minutes too long in a parking spot.
I will take a proactive approach, and I will contact the barge companies and ask them to please relocate their vehicles so they're not violating the ordinance, or we will be taking enforcement action. From that point, I frequently get correspondence from members of the board and the community telling me about ordinance violations. I would gladly pass along an ordinance parking violation in front of the Libby Museum to the police department for enforcement actions, if it's a problem.
I think that sounds like a good I think that sounds like a good plan.
I'll give it a thumbs up.
I'm not trying to be a pooh-pooh about it, just don't create red lines, just don't create red lines and let people walk across them and go, well, it just doesn't work like that, it doesn't build confidence.
I'm still confused whether we're at 5,000 or 3,000, I know there was conversation, I wasn't at that meeting, and I didn't see anything in the minutes, other than it was discussed.
I saw in the minutes, unless I misunderstood the minutes, that there was a lot of direct references to fees later, like, Mr. Senical, discussion continues on adjusted rate fees later to pay on Libby dock, and I took that as a we hadn't decided. And just for the benefit of this board, and I'll leave it as a handout, I took the time at the beginning of the month of June to build a little simple calculation as to, rather than do comparables, you know, Brian shopped around and found that some people charge, some people don't, and I said, well, meshugan around that, what does it cost us, how much money do we need to set aside to actually fix the bloody thing, the ramp and the dock? And I did some work with Luke, and I prepared something, and I'll leave it as a, as a straw person, the headline is really simple, we probably need to sock away 17,000 bucks a year, year one, to start a kiddy to repair these things, then the question is, who pays? And I don't know, we'll figure that out later.
How many barge companies have paid this year, Jim?
Two.
Just two are using our facility now. So now, Luke's idea is good, and your idea is good, unless nobody uses it anymore, then we don't need any repairs. If 10 use it, we need more repairs than if two use it.
Well, we could, we'll debate that at a later point.
We'll have to think about how this...
We'll debate that at a later point, because current, present method of operations, we're not bubbling the docks, and because we don't bubble the docks, they're getting wrecked, and the argument was, well, we want to have snowmobilers, and all kinds of fun stuff. The headline is, the docks and the ramp are getting used, and they need to be maintained, and we shouldn't be laying that on the Libby, trust.
If we only have one barge company, we have to charge them 17,000.
Well, we just have to figure out who pays. Maybe we just say to the taxpayer, we can't figure it out, you pay for it.
That's what they've been doing.
I know, you just pay for it.
That's what they've been doing, so the trust doesn't pay, it's not you.
Pay for the parking lot, pay.
Happening.
All right, next. So we haven't set a price.
11, 12, and 13 are all the same, other than commercial barge vessel landing license and select board, it's just nomenclature changes. 3610, commercial passenger vessel landing license regulations and fees. Any vessel engaged in carrying passengers for hire must obtain a commercial passenger vessel landing license from the Wolfboro Select Board prior to picking up or dropping off passengers at the town docks. At dockside, all vessels engaged in carrying passengers for hire must use a commercial dock slip and are not authorized to use dock space for renting, except as otherwise provided and outlined in their commercial vessel landing license. The operation of any vessel rental agent at the town docks is strictly prohibited.
So I'm going to go back to the thing, do you mean town docks, that we're going to let people engage in carrying passengers for hire on other docks, other than dockside, because we have a definition of town dock, so do you mean dockside dock, we need to...
The commercial dock.
Clarify exactly what we're talking about.
Yes, I think you're correct, Linda, I think I should have made this...
So I wrote, I wrote, the commercial dock, number one, number two, number three, or the designated spot on Dock G. If that's what we're going to do. So if you want to name it out, you could name it out, and just list all the spots where commercial boats are going to be. Now, the spot on Dock G is in flux, because we talked about all that, Dock G is not a commercial dock at this point.
I thought we've already covered this, because we're only going to allow four, so basically, we're not, if it's not the four, there's no more.
Correct.
So what I saw on the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce website was a charter for fishing vessels and other stuff that were being advertised on the Chamber of Commerce website, yeah, they park at another location, but they do pickups at the town docks.
Correct.
How does that fall into this description, Jim?
It's not allowed. I actually saw somebody, I've mentioned this at a meeting, I think twice now, I saw somebody who was from Dover, who was picked up by a boat that came from Alton, who went out for a four-hour or whatever fishing charter, then came back, was dropped at our town docks, got in his pickup truck, and drove back to Dover. He didn't spend a nickel in town, but he did go fishing for four hours, and the fishing boat was from Alton. So this happens all the time, it happens in docks all around the lake, this is why Center Harbor actually has a dock attendant that they pay $30,000 a year to be there, just to monitor how their docks are used.
So I'm wondering if we can make an accommodation for this low-level or low-impact item?
Like what?
I'm not sure, I'm just discussing it, I mean, I...
So what happens if the low-impact item turns into six fishing charters that are coming twice a day each? Then we have 12 more people using the residential docks as commercial operations, and we've already defined that the residential docks are not for commercial operations.
So what do you think, Dave?
I don't know how we're going to control that.
Yeah, that's a problem, we don't have any enforcement.
Unless we have $30,000 in our budget, or somebody sits down there in a chair.
I know, but we can't have the wording that Jim is proposing, that's the problem. That's what I'm getting at, it's like, we're putting wording in that we can't enforce.
They're not carrying, oh, they are carrying, okay. You know, this is the best that we can do.
Yeah, I don't know how we...
I think this will work.
Just being honest and straightforward, if we're putting it in there, then we're asking for the situation to be solvent, and if it's not in there, then it can happen.
Yep. So Jim's going to admonish me again for jumping ahead.
It's going to happen.
So...
How we change it? We have something in there, it's better than nothing. And I don't know how we're going to enforce it, John, unless we sit somebody down there.
Correct.
So the model, the model for that space, it's a chaos model right now, it's many to one, right? Many vessels potentially to one teeny-weeny space. The hope and the aspiration is, they all play nice with each other, except for maybe somebody who says, private dock, and it's swimming in the water while they're doing that, which is a different discussion for another time. So we have a chaos model, we've, you know, to pile on, we have granted, if that's the right term, we've approved whatever the right licenses or permits for people who can't give us, are unable to give us a schedule, with the exception of those folks, they can give us a schedule, so when they go out, when they come back. So these other folks have said, I don't have a schedule, because I run my business episodically, so we're on demand. So we have a chaos model here. The question is, for me, it is, you could take that dock, and you could say, we have eight hours of operation on that dock. And just follow me for a second, because it may not work for people, but just try it out. We've got eight hours of operation on the dock. Eight in the morning, till nine, nine to 10, 10 to 11, 11 to 12, one to two, 12 to one, one to two, and we allocate to four vessels on a sealed bid basis, four two-hour slots per year, and you can bid on them. Call it a day. And next year, you get to do it all over again. Call it a day.
So how does the mail guy deliver? If he doesn't get a slot...
Service.
So you didn't get your slots, so you can't deliver mail this year.
Brian. Linda has...
I went another way, and I thought about it, is if we gave, and these are drop-off and pickups, that's all they're supposed to be doing there. So if you took an hour, and we had six of them, you give them each 10 minutes, you pick up, drop off, and one gets 8 o'clock, one gets 8:15, one gets 8:20, and they, for every hour coming down, if you're worried about chaos.
So you're saying, put order by having a calendar.
Just another thought, I wouldn't do it.
Have a calendar, just have a calendar.
I wouldn't do it, but that's another way you can do it. Brian and I spent some time thinking about the different docks, and I think there's another way to do it, it's not what's...
Well, we'll get to there eventually, we're not there yet, to that part of this.
I just think there's another way to do it, so...
So John, I think to answer your preliminary question, if you jump forward to number eight, failure to comply with the regulations of the commercial passenger vessel landing license, landing fee program will result in a fine to be imposed by the Select Board in the amount not to exceed $100 per unauthorized landing. So you, as a board of selectmen, do have the ability, if you're down to the town docks, and you see somebody coming in, and they are actually picking up clients for a charter service, you have the complete authority to find them $100 per landing.
So you want us to all sit around the town docks with a clipboard?
I was asked the question, I'm just...
No, I understand, but if you play it out, some of us has to sit around with a clipboard, or what happens, and I hope this doesn't happen, we ask the dock attendants that we have down there, who are doing a phenomenal job...
They're not police officers.
Doing a phenomenal job, you know, bringing boats in and getting people, you know, to tie up, and Mr. Duchesne just whispered in my ear, they are not police officers, so I don't want them getting in the middle of this thing, because someone's going to get all pissy.
I don't think we asked anywhere, talked about them ever doing...
No, no, I want to make sure we carve that out before we start putting it in. So it's an enforcement question, once again, and we can either come up with a calendar, or say, everybody's out. Now, Mr. Thurston made a motion at the last meeting that basically said, everybody's out, and your motion was defeated. So the only way that can get reopened is if we reconsider it. So we're now faced with a calendar, otherwise, we have to reopen your motion that got defeated.
There are other ways.
So we've got to look at it with a little bit of common sense. There's regulations against speeding, people speed, there's regulations against stealing, people steal, there's regulations against not parking for more than two hours, people do, there's regulations of not parking for more than four hours on our docks, people do. You can only enforce what you can enforce, we could get rid of all regulations then, no regulations at all in town, everybody can do whatever they want, or we put the regulation in place, and we do the best to enforce it that we can, that's all we can do. You can have a speed limit of 30 miles an hour through downtown, and I'll guarantee you, people are going to go 40, it's just going to happen. So we have to put the ordinance in place, we have to do our best to enforce it, we're not going to be perfect, we just have to do it.
Well, and I think this is a really timely conversation, because this is for 2026, if this gets adopted, budget guidelines will be coming out to you in the next few weeks. We had a joint meeting with the Police Commission, we heard the police chief talking about his officers, and the fact that he wants to see his officers out on the road, and yes, they'll do some enforcement, but are we crossing a bridge into a time where we need to have a civilian parking and dock enforcement person writing these tickets? If that's something that this board wants to see happen, it's something that we can put into the budget to help bring this ordinance further into compliance.
Dave? It's something to think about. A week and a half ago, we had people come to the microphone that said that the allocation of no parking spaces had created, my words, a disbalance between business interests in the town. Something to think about. Last year, or two years ago, I wasn't on this board, but two years ago, I think the town manager made an effort to say, hey, I think I might have a solution to our parking issue, let's try, you know, meters, or, you know, those self-pay things, that was blown out of the water, for lots of reasons. So we have a parking issue, we have an allocation of dock space issue, we have a concern about putting in, not putting in regulations that, you know, we want to do the best we can, make a best effort, to Mr. Duchesne's point. Well, maybe we tee up the conversation at the budget and say, during the summertime, you have a person that is responsible for parking, and for the fidelity of the use of the docks.
I think it's a good conversation to have.
I think so. It's ugly, it's really ugly, because that, you know, it's the city stuff, but you know what, we stepped away from, we vagged out on parking meters, and I'm being critical there, but we vagged out on that, so we're left with putting a human being with a badge and a whistle, you know, enforcing ordinances.
And there's ways to do it, too, because you can do it with, and I've said this before, there is digital monitoring, where you can take, and the person has a digital apparatus, it automatically chocks a tire, it checks a license plate, and it automatically sends the person a ticket.
We're on boats and wharfs.
She's getting late.
So I have one more point, and I think I would thank Paul for bringing it up of my motion, but, you know, it was about either none or everyone, and we can't do everyone, we're only going to do four, but we know that there's other people, and I don't want to be de minimis about the people fishing, but on their website, they're getting 600 or 700 dollars a day for fishing tours, so it's not like it's a 25 or 50-dollar outing, do you see what I'm saying? So that's the problem with what we're doing, where we are picking a select few, and then the other guys have to go under the radar, but you know they're doing it, and then if somebody else wants to do the commercial thing, they can't do it, so it's not really fair to them, so we're really disingenuous, is what we are.
Well, I agree with you, except for the fact that those fishing charters, we've had a docks and wharf ordinance in place, where they could have come to us for the last 20 years, anytime they wanted, and said, let me pay my landing fees, and they chose not to. So is it on us, or is it on them?
Okay, let's move along here, it's now almost 8:30.
Thank you, Dave.
We've been here for two hours, so I think we ought to wrap it up. Jim?
Number one, each business operating with a commercial passenger vessel landing license shall comply with Towne-Wolfboro regulations and all state of New Hampshire registration, numbering, inspection, operation requirements, as well as other New Hampshire laws, rules, and regulations. The commercial passenger vessel landing shall be valid under such conditions as determined by the Select Board. Each vessel will be required to have individual commercial passenger vessel landing license plaque card that includes the vessel's bow number. The application for the commercial passenger vessel landing license submitted to the Select Board shall contain the following information, and such other information as the Select Board deems necessary. Name of the vessel...
Jim, can we, after the name of vessel, say, commercial insurance, commercial safety inspection, unless that's covered under inspections above? Certificate from the Department of New Hampshire for a safety operator's license.
Inspection plate.
And for a, and that operating, that captain's license, or whatever it is called, should be for every operator of every boat, because we have some people that come to us with six boats, and if they have six boats, and they have their six boats used at the same time, they need six commercial operating boat certificates.
Okay, so there was a lot of information thrown in the past 30 seconds, if you could just send that to me electronically, it would be appreciated.
All right.
And I will take care of that. The home port address, telephone number of the vessel owner-operator, estimated number of landings, one round trip constitutes two landings... of landings, one round trip constitutes two landings. A listing of desired landing times and locations to be reserved for the vessel landing times will be finalized by the select board and will be established in such a manner as to ensure public safety and to avoid congestion or overlapping landing times at the town docks. This is a carve-out from the previous one. I'm, I'm not sure where you want to go with this.
Well, that is one that we should mark that we have to do something with.
Yep.
So we're going to do something about it?
Yeah. We need to do something about it.
A statement indicating the operator's agreement and accept responsibility to reimburse the town for damages to the town docks caused by operator's vessel. Normal wear and tear accepted. The applicant shall also provide the select board with proof of insurance and other information required by the select board for efficient administration of the commercial vessel landing license.
But is this one, have, you wanted something earlier about commercial? Is this going to be redundant?
So.
So let's not be redundant.
Yeah, we're going to have to look at one through 4E, and just make sure that in all of them, we include that they have commercial insurance, that they have commercial safety inspections, that they have commercial operation licensing, and that has to be for every boat that comes to the docks, whether they have one boat or six boats.
And Coast Guard approved vessel.
Yeah.
A vessel that is approved.
Well, that's how they get the commercial safety inspection from Marine Patrol. That covers their boat. So they need the commercial safety inspection from Marine Patrol, commercial licensing to operate the boat, and they need, they need the proper commercial insurance for the boat.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'll go along with it for the ride.
Insurance for the town.
Yes.
Not the boat, for the town.
Correct.
And it's because, do we want people who are Wharf citizens or visitors of Wharf getting on a boat that isn't safety inspected, doesn't meet Coast Guard approval, and is being operated by somebody who does not have a certificate to operate a commercial vehicle? We probably don't.
Well, the answer is obvious. You don't, right? Especially if we, if we know they're operating on our dock, and we either close our eyes and say they're not, or we license them, or whatever the, whatever the right term is. Of course, we don't.
Is this all redundant, number one, as well as follow other New Hampshire laws, rules, and regulations?
Yeah, it's state requirement to get a commercial inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a state requirement to have a commercial boating license?
Does the vessel itself?
Get inspected, yes.
You register first and get it commercially inspected.
Does the vessel have to have an inspection plate? Does the vessel have to have a U.S. Coast Guard inspection plate?
Not a U.S. Coast Guard.
Doesn't all vessels that are manufactured have to have U.S. Coast Guard inspection plates? Doesn't all manufactured vessels in the United States have to have a U.S. Coast Guard inspection plate if they have an engine on the back of it?
If they're.
Oh, my God. Thank, sorry about that.
If they're, was it A B Y C A? So a manufacturer that makes a certain amount of vessels within a year, yes, they are required to, but I mean, like, my, my vessel, for example, I built myself, which I'm not, I don't, I don't, I don't build and sell a certain amount of boats every year, so it's not required to meet A B Y C. I mean, I still had it marine-surveyed by a U.S. Coast Guard certified inspector, you know, the whole nine yards, but it's not, it's, the U.S. Coast Guard has no authority over the inland waters. It's, it's all state. It's all state police.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I understand or agree, so my, my understanding is that you'd need to have an inspection plate on a vessel, period. If you're going to put a engine on it, you have to have an inspection plate. I'm not sure I understand whether the Coast Guard, or Marine Patrol, or whomever has jurisdiction over here. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure that what we.
Well, what we need to do is find out.
We need to find out and be clear.
And one is good, Jim, as long as people.
I encourage you to reach out to, to the state, state police, and get it clarified.
Yes, we need to do that.
We do.
So, so one covers it, Jim, as long as it's understood that what the state requirements are. We just probably should list what the state requirements are.
True.
Okay, I will go in and I will list the state requirements.
Number five.
The commercial passenger vessel landing license shall be carried aboard the vessel at all times when the vessel is using the town docks. The fees for the commercial passenger vessel landing license shall be called landing fees and shall be, I'm not sure, there was a lot of conversation here about the formula. I'm not sure if it's four cents or eight cents per foot of overall length for each landing.
So I had, I did a little bit of numbers, and based on what had been said a little bit, that we wanted to double our costs. And the way I looked at it is if we do dock number three at $20 a foot, that doubles the cost for the boat's landing there. If we do dock number two at $80 a foot, that doubles the cost of the boat's landing there. And if we do commercial dock number one at $40 a foot, that doubles the price of those boats, too. Then we can take out of the equation how many times they land, because guess what? We really don't know how many times they land. They can say they're going to estimate 10, and it could be 15. They could say it could be 33, and they have a rainy time and it's only 20, or it could go up to 80 if they have a sunny time. So the number of times they actually land, it's not really known, except for the Mount Washington, potentially the mailboat, and maybe a boat that comes five times.
Millie B gives us a schedule.
Yeah, and this, and the, so it, it just makes it cleaner and easier, and then at any time, the select board can look at these numbers and say, okay, we're at $20 a foot, let's up it by a dollar a foot, or $2 a foot, or $3 a foot, and it makes it clearer and easier for, for us and for people to understand.
And can I just add to that, if I could? And that rubric that you just did could work. We, we, Jim, we do or we do not have a dedicated fund for proceeds from revenues for the dock, yes or no? We don't?
We will have, and that's identified on number nine of this ordinance, and we will get that taken care of this year.
Okay, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to create one of those things. Somewhere between now and, and, you know, the, you know, Brian's idea of revenue, whatever calculation, it seems to me that we probably need to understand, what is the annual cost to maintain that commercial side of the, of the, of the operation? What's the, what's, how much money do we really need to set aside on an annual basis, and then bang it up against where you think the revenues are coming in, so that we can, we can at least have a rationale for why we're charging the amount of money we're charging, right? We should be able to recover our costs and have a contribution to capital for future investments on the docks. And not ask the voters, hey, you pay for it.
So would that be replacement cost plus dock-in cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you're, you're then going to get a, a figure that's just going to be prohibitive.
Well, we can just say to the voters, you have to pick up the tab.
Well, there's a certain amount of services the town provides.
If this is one of them, then that's it.
A certain percentage of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't have any problem having a reasonable fees and put it into account so it supplements what the taxpayer has to do. But to get the full calculation and, and with the hands and stuff, it's going to be cost prohibitive.
How much did the, how much wear and tear did the hockey players put on Pop Whalen?
I don't know.
They're paying for ice time, $235 an hour.
Correct, and these people will be paying for boat landing. But I will guarantee, we don't know how much wear and tear each individual hockey player puts on, or each team, whether a MIT team puts on as much wear and tear as a high school team on the locker rooms. We just can't figure that out.
No, but the, but the premise, but the premise is the same, though, because we, the taxpayers, don't want to pay for the facility. We want the people that are using the facility to pay for this facility.
And I think that's where I, I, I differ from you. There's a certain amount of the facility we provide because it's part of our community. It helps the business community. It adds to the people who come, who stays. Yep, the economy.
The people use their taxes to pay for the roads.
And then there is a certain amount that I think is, makes sense, that we charge and put in account to help the taxpayer pay for it. But I do not believe that all the use of this dock and the hands all should be based, and we put all fees in to cover all of it. I don't think that's the case.
So if I could.
I don't use those docks, but boy, I don't, I don't mind paying for it.
If I could, Dave, so we're having a, we're having a theoretical conversation about, about this, and I kind of, I, I, I understand Linda's point, and I understand my point. And I think what we probably should do, rather have a theoretical conversation, is we should put some real hard numbers on the table and figure out what, what this thing costs us on an annual basis. And then we put it out in front of the people who are looking on, looking at us on TV and say, here's, here's our judgment on what the right parsing of those costs are.
I think the theoretical is just as important as the figure.
No, I understand, but numbers always are, they're stubborn things.
Numbers are if you're doing things all, if everything we do here, you have to get paid back.
So I would.
Some of the, we provide services, some of the things that are here, you know, we, we're all over Pop Whalen because it's an enterprise fund and it has to pay for itself. None of our recreational programs, a lot of them are for services.
Plowing our roads. How much do we pay for road plowing fees?
Come on, I, I, I wouldn't mind carving out the commercial dock and then not doing the cost for the other docks. So we can just get the numbers for the commercial dock.
Thanks.
Yep.
I don't know if we can even get those.
All right, Jim, let's move along.
I think it's seven, I believe. The commercial passenger vessel landing license shall be based on actual landings and shall be paid for at the time of application. Failure to comply with the requirements of the commercial passenger vessel landing license, landing fee program will result in a fine to be imposed by the select board in the amount not to exceed $100 per unauthorized landing.
I would say for that, failure to comply with the requirements is immediate revocation of your license, and anybody who operates on our commerce, on our residential docks with commercial business is fined $1,000.
I was going to say 500.
Nope. If the fisherman comes in and somebody catches him, it's $1,000. If somebody takes and puts their boat in to do passenger service, it's $1,000. And if you already have an agreement with us, and you step over the line, you're out. One strike, done.
I, I, I would have to look at the RSAs. I do not believe you, as a board of selectmen, have the latitude to issue a fine greater than $100, but I will do a check on that.
I think, I think you're right, too.
I think, no, I think the police, I think the police department also, they can't, they have a, a ceiling.
They have a matrix, anything, I believe, over 99, 99 for ordinance purposes.
But again, where we come off the rail here, and I don't know how to fix it, is, you know, and no disrespect to you, Brian, because I understand the fervor in what you're saying. You know, it's like bam, we just want to just bam. And, and that, you know, to Linda, your earlier point, that's, I don't think that's who we are, but we got to somehow come from bam to cut the crap. There's got to be some place in the middle, right?
We either do it by grades, one and then other, or we give them one warning and then we hit them.
Yeah, they're just gone. You just take, you just take it away.
Well, Jim's going to follow up on that.
Yep.
And then if we can only charge them $100 each time, then we charge them $100 each time.
Damn. Now, you could revoke a license. You could just simply say you're not eligible for the next year for your license.
Number nine, Jim?
Allocation of the commercial passenger vessel landing license revenues shall be set aside in a manner to be determined by the select board. The set aside commercial passenger vessel landing license revenues will be set aside exclusively for the maintenance and improvement of the town docks and the docks, and the dockside, and, and Cape Park areas. I got to do a little cleanup there, but you got the gist.
Just backing up, Linda, did you, did I hear you say we, we got to get at the scheduling
I.
I'm just, I'm just making notes of who said what.
Yeah, we have to, yes, because the thing about the scheduling, we have some on demand. That's not a schedule. So we've got schedule in here. On demand's not a schedule, so we've got to, got to figure out how we're going to deal with that.
I kind of agreed with Brian a little bit. If we could do away with the scheduling thing and just do the foot, we'd be better off.
The scheduling is different from that. The scheduling is when they're coming in, whether they're going to give up.
Oh, okay, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, so the scheduling, Linda, and, and I understand, she wants to know the schedule of the boats coming, so that we can make sure that, that there's not log jams. And, and I understand that. We have to remember, too, that the Winnie Bell is going to be coming back, too, eventually.
I don't know how the Winnie Bell can come back. We already got four boats.
Yeah, it's, well, it's part of, it's part of the Mount Washington. No, well, is it four boats, or is it for?
That's one of the things I think we have to be thinking.
You, you, we've, we've only issued four, and we said to Clearwater Lodges, you're good for this year, you're not good for next year. Clearwater Lodges was the fourth one.
Oh, they were?
Yes.
I didn't think we had said that.
Yeah, and the, and the, but the, the Winnie Bell is part of the Mount Washington Cruise Ship Authority. So is it for companies we're licensing, or is it for boats we're licensing? And are we, are we licensing only four boats for one dock, or, there's still a lot to figure out with that.
Yeah, there is still that. Brian and I have kind of bounced that back and forth, trying to figure out exactly what makes the most amount of sense here. Are you doing a company, or are you doing a boat?
Yeah.
There's, there's, so there's more thoughts. We need to, there are more things we need to define.
I thought we set the precedent already, because we sent Torren out because he wanted more than one boat. So we already set precedent.
Well, we're living in a world of, of contradictions. You know, we, we say, you got to have that schedule. Well, we let the other three come in. You can only get one vessel. Well, and, so we, we're living in a world of contradiction, so the ordinance is, is in need of thoughtful refresh.
And I was on the wrong side of that vote, because I looked at our ordinance, and I said, well, there's nothing in our ordinance that says Torren can't have six boats here. Our ordinance doesn't say, oh, we can say no to him because he has six, and we can say yes to him because he has two, and yes to him because he has one.
And I know this is unfair.
So we didn't follow our ordinance with that vote. And that's, shame on me.
It's unfair.
Shame on us.
It really is, we.
3611, Jim?
Pick winners and losers.
Let's get this done.
Yes, come on.
Violation and penalties, except as otherwise provided in the ordinance, in this or other ordinance or by law, any person, business, individual, or rental agent violating any provision, any of the provisions of this section shall be fined $100 for the first offense, $100 for each subsequent offense, fines payable within 48 hours to Wharf Police Station.
So I have a question. We can only fine $100 if, if a fishing vessel comes in for a charter and we grab Marine Patrol. Does Marine Patrol have any authority over our docks and, and our?
They are not going to enforce our ordinances. They're going to enforce New Hampshire law.
That's it.
That's it.
So we can't tow a boat. That's impossible.
Better not.
Administrative position, provision, nothing contained in this chapter shall be construed as repealed or modifying any other ordinance or regulation of the town, nor this chapter shall be construed to, as repealing or modifying any private restrictions placed upon property by covenants running with land to which the town is a party, but shall be in addition thereto. This is previous language. Severability and amendments are both previous language.
Got it.
That's good.
All right, does the board want to move forward with a public hearing?
No, I want to, I would like to see another draft. This isn't even in a draft form, and I'd also like to see.
I'll ask the question.
A draft of a proposed license agreement, so we have some kind of an idea of what we're talking about here.
And which, what's, what's our appetite for settling on prices?
Well, there have to be motions made for that.
Not good.
And, and if there's any objection, I'll, unless there is objection, I'll just pass out my straw person Libby Dock Maintenance Rebuild calculation. It's just straightforward. I got this, you know, Luke and I spent 30 minutes on the phone. I basically asked Luke, I said, what does it take to rebuild the dock down there? How many years is the useful life? What does it take to rebuild the ramp down there? What is the useful life? What is the useful life? How much money should we be spending each year to maintain this? Did you ever provide an estimate to the town, which I believe he did, I have a copy of his email, to basically take the dock and fit it up so that we start fresh? He provided that number to me and the email. I asked Jim, how much money, what does it cost us to borrow money? 4%. What do we think the rate of inflation is going to be? 4%. So really simple. This is not, you know, this is not anything other than freshman math. I just basically said, how much money do we have to set aside on an annual basis? And I came up with, I didn't come up with the numbers for bubblers. We're going to have to bite that one, figure it out. Luke shared that you could screen the dock so that, you know, it wouldn't get wrecked. You still have to bubble it. But then the question we're going to have to wrestle is, who pays? And again, to Linda's point, I mean, is it all on them, or is it all on some of us? None of us?
Do you calculate, did you calculate that people, private people, launched their boats there? It's not just barges?
No, I know. Here's what I didn't do. What I didn't do is I didn't figure out, I didn't try to make an effort to figure out who should pay. What I basically asked the question is, how much does it cost, or will it cost us if we started today to put money in the bank to repair the ramp, repair the dock? When I say repair, completely repair it. How many years is the useful life? How much money do we have to sock away each year? And I came with an annual number. I'll just give you, you know, an annual number is $10,500 bucks. Plus, hang on, plus, one-time needed repairs to get the dock down there up to snuff, you know, because it's wavy-gravy. So that's like $17,000 in year one, plus the cost of a bubbler, and I have no idea what those things are. Who should pay that amount of money? We have to figure that out.
Okay, so I'm asking you, because if we're talking about barge people paying it, I'm stepping out.
No, I understand.
That's why I'm trying to get some...
I never, yeah, I never said barges. I just said, here's the cost that the town is going to have to pony up. We can either ask those people out there to pay for it, barge people to pay for it, fisher people, I don't know. We'll figure that out at some point. I just did the math, and then we can figure out who should pick up the tab.
All right, so moved. Paul will take and talk to Luke and get the same kind of estimate for the commercial docks. Thank you.
So I don't know why we have to do that for the commercial docks. I just pulled up the CIP spreadsheet, the debt schedule. The annual debt payment to this project for the commercial docks, Phase 3, was $84,000 a year. So $84,000 a year with principal and interest. You have four best companies coming in. I think you've answered your question.
$21,000 each.
So, you know, I'll be glad to help you with that. You know, that's just your bond payment, so that's just to cover the cost of doing it. The question is, you know, the decking and all that kind of stuff has to get worked out. If you think it's $84,000 a year divided by how many people are going to use the commercial docks? Right? I came up with, again, 17.5 year one for, and I don't know how many people are going to use those docks down there. What I don't want to do is I don't want to say, well, let's just, because we only have two people using our docks down there right now. I want to sock it to those barge owners. No, I want you, all of us, to figure that out. But I did the math, so it's there for you. Okay.
All right. Anybody got any other questions for this meeting?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Somebody make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.